The United States of America.
The Republic for which it stands.
All right, so we are going to review and discuss the strategic plan which was attached to your board packet.
So Madam Chair, if I could start. So we did the two days of planning with Hugh Life and we came up with a list of items that were identified as goals or priorities. And folks volunteered to be lead on those to start to make some headway on defining what it was, who might be on the team, if there were other resource needs that needed to be identified. And today is our first attempt to come back and have that further conversation. And so I just want to maybe review the vision of the county that we confirmed when we were doing our strategic planning and that's Pine County will be a place where people come to recreate, to work and to start successful businesses and a place whose identity remains rooted in the outdoors. And so that drove a lot of the discussion and thinking. And then the actual goals were divided into three focus areas and they were developing community assets, expanding capacity and positioning for success. And so in your packet, there was just a listing of those goals and the identification of who the lead or leads of that project would be. And so if it's agreeable to you, we would, I thought we would just start working through that list, starting with, and I added numbers just for convenience so that we can keep projects straight, especially from year to year. And so if we start with that project number one, fund balance for each operating fund in Kelly.
So what do you want me to cover?
What, what does that, what does that goal entail?
Yeah.
Who's involved in that goal? What's a timeline for that goal?
Sounds good.
Did JJ go off, Ryan?
The video is muted, but he is still there.
Okay, okay. So that goal, so we, the board has been very focused on the general fund, fund balance and through the years, there's been some focus on the budget just fund balance as well. However, some of our other funds haven't been as much of a focus. So the highway department, for example, and then we probably want to wrap in some of those other funds like our building fund and our technology fund as well. So I think the players we're probably going to end up working with is going to be that investment slash financial committee. And just to kind of start to establish, what do we need the fund balance in those to be? So the highway department maybe has a different beast than like the, the building, the building fund and the technology fund. But it's just something that we really should focus on because right now with how we've done our highway funding, really the highway department is hurting for funding. And that's just because we haven't had a focus there and Mark's just taken 0% levies and used fund balance and now we're to a point where that doesn't work. So the hope is that we can establish whether a percentage or a minimum dollar amount and work towards that.
Madam Chair, so can we have a discussion here? So, um, hey, help me, we have a general fund we're shooting to carry 25% of our overall budget. So when, when we do that, is that to be used in all of the other spots? You know what I mean? So if we expand that, are you trying to figure out how much goes each one or how?
Right.
So are we going to have separate ones plus that mean being that one at that percentage?
I believe the goal was to have separate ones because for example, in the last couple of months, if you looked at that cash balance report, the highway department's in the hole. So that means the general fund is borrowing the highway fund money until they get more of their revenues in.
I get it.
At least by having that general fund balance, we can do that. I mean, it's, it's not like the board's making a fund balance transfer or anything, but we have the money in the bank to be able to cover those expenses.
So what I'm wondering there is do we change a model for our general fund now if we start having bigger balances saved somewhere else or we just want all of it to grow? That's what I'm wondering.
I would feel like we'd want all of it to grow. When the state auditors look at it, they look at, they look at each fund separately and.
And I would, I would ask the question when the board established the goal for the general fund, what were your assumptions going into that? Because I don't recall that the goal was to cash flow the other funds.
No, see, that's just in my mind. The county has X amount and then whatever the county needs below it. That's the way, so that's why, that's why I'm asking for that clarity. That's kind of for me because in my mind it was that way. That doesn't mean it's right.
And then, Madam Chair.
I think the other thing that happened since we set that goal is the way we were required to count highway funds changed. Because I believe we used to be able, we would get advances. If we knew a project was going to go in 2024, we would have already had the money in our checkbook.
Yeah.
And then they switched that, correct me if I'm wrong, so that it was more, you took a draw on it and, and some, some of it became reimbursable almost. So it was a huge shift where if you were going to do $9 million worth of work in this construction season, we would have had that money in the bank already. And, and, and now to not have that, it, it changes not the work that needs to be done and not the ability for us to pay the contractors when they're done. It, it changes how it looks on paper.
Yeah, and.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, JJ.
Yeah, um, has, uh, maybe David would be better for this. Has Mark given any indicators yet of what the total savings this year? Um, the highway department has experienced with the lack of snow and, and lack of road treatment and the, you know, due to the very, very mild winter, I, I got to think that that's a substantial savings that should be factored into this also, correct? Has he, has he given any indicators of what the, this record warm mild winters?
Yeah, I would like you anticipate that there are some savings this year from not having to sand and salt and plow as much. We always have to remember we do an annual budget, so we have the first half of next winter before we can declare victory. And then this will be an item that will get reported in the quarterly budget update after the end of the first quarter. And so you'll get some more detail on that.
Yeah, we have to remember last year was terrible and last year didn't end till January 1st of this year.
And the, the piece, just to maybe draw the distinction, the piece that drives the fund balance in highway is primarily the projects which are not levy funded significantly. Those are state aid dollars and
Right.
tax dollars. And so the, it all gets lumped together in the fund, but the operating budget is pretty small compared to the project budget and really doesn't drive the, the fund balance piece of it much.
And the percentage for sales tax looks good yet? Still on track for where we thought?
JJ, you want to go back and start that again? You guys were talking over each other.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, so does the, uh, the tax portion, sales tax portion of this, are we still on track with that? Are those numbers still are where we expected or they worse, they better?
Isn't that just in the Friday update?
Yeah. So as of, as of 2020, the collections for 2023 were 4.6%, I think it was above 2022. And the sales tax is a, a flat total amount of money. Once that amount of money is collected, the sales tax ends or once we get to the date, the sales tax ends. And so the, the balancing act with the sales tax really focuses on, did the project estimate that was done several years ago match what the project's actually going to cost?
I got you. Thank you.
But yeah, collections, I, I don't know if I shared this in the Friday update or if I just did.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. But we're, if you look at the number of years into it versus the percent collected, we're running ahead of, of what a straight line collection would be.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve, what were you going to say earlier?
Well, I, I think within those numbers, there's some interesting conclusions we could probably draw is that the economy in Pine County is doing pretty good because when we started 10 years ago, 12 years, whatever it was when we started, the, the estimate was that we would collect about seven or 800,000. And then we went over a million and this last year we collected 1.8 million. I know there's inflation that has taken place, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of economy going on in our county if we collected 1.8 million at a half a percent.
I agree.
A lot of Amazon.
Could be.
The February forecast is due out tomorrow, the state February forecast. They will look at their sales tax collections versus their projection. And that will be a number that's kind of interesting and, and probably follows what we're seeing statewide. But that will give a macro perspective on the sales tax.
Same, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Could this be something possibly for Leslie Economic Development? Is there a way to, you know, for marketing purposes and for tracking and to get the best bang for our buck? Is there a way to, uh, kind of line item where these, uh, the sales tax dollars actually come from? Is it coming from local sales, internet sales, you know, could it even be broken down further? Lodging, fuel, I mean, you know, to kind of, kind of track the customer, you know, we got the, the money's coming in, but wouldn't it be kind of nice to know where it's coming in from?
Be very, it'd be very nice to.
I agree, JJ. So we have had that information from the Department of Revenue and they will not release it because it's private data. Uh, because then we could start to calculate, oh, this is how much Walmart makes and things like that. So they will not release.
Okay.
So maybe just looking at like the, the goal of this or the, the outcome of this goal would be currently the audit reports, the fund balance of the general fund every year against the county board's goal. Kelly, would you see that if the, the board established goals for the other funds that those could then be reported in that same format?
Yeah, I think that was a really good way to do it.
So what do we have, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, your friend.
So what do we have for separate funds right now? Besides building and tech? Why is there, was there one more?
Um, so we have a lot of funds, but kind of.
We're not doing anything.
So right, so you've got the building and the tech fund that, you know, we, we fund with tax levy dollars every year. The one I didn't mention is the elections fund because I think we're to a point where we have that levy down and as long as we levy that amount each year, um, we can.
We have that one managed though.
Right, we have that managed. And other ways we've got our debt funds obviously, but those are set in the bond documents of what those, how those levies are done. Um, so really it's just the ones that we haven't focused on are the highway and then potentially the tech and building fund.
And we talk about highway almost every budget. It just kind of scrape by, you know?
And, and Madam Chair, Health and Human Services, right?
Right.
That's a, that's a large and active fund that I think it, I think this will be an interesting process to see how their fund balance because we know, um, like highway, Health and Human Services has worked to span fund balance in recent years versus increasing levies.
We did that with Health and Human Services. That was just like, oh, I thought highway.
So if that sounds like a, a good outcome, that actually it could be for the 2024 audit, right?
Right.
It will be done next spring.
Yes.
So what do you, what are your suggestions then? For management side?
I don't know yet. Um, so like Dave pointed out, like with the highway department, for example, we need to focus on more of that operating costs probably than that project cost. And so that's something to think about. Same with Health and Human Services. You look at their total budget. Um, that includes programs and things like that. So maybe we need to start looking at operating costs of those funds and is it just setting a similar goal for those operating costs in other funds as we have for the general fund? It might, it might be as simple as that. And then just being clear when we're doing our budget, that's what we are working towards.
Madam Chair, are we ready to move to number two?
I think we are.
Which we, we could have almost wrapped number two into number one as well. Um, so currently every year we are budgeting, um, we are levying dollars in the building fund, for example, and we have a facilities committee that oversees, you know, everything facilities related. But we don't have literally like a written capital improvement plan or program. Something that says every single year, we, you know, in five years from now, we know we need to replace this front end loader. So we need to plan for $10,000 a year or whatever. There are way more expenses than that. $50,000 a year to plan for that front end loader. And so that's just something that I think it's going to be a Mark and I working on it a lot of what are those things that are going to need to be replaced, both buildings and equipment? And when will they need to be replaced? And then we can be intentional about making sure we have the funds for them. Um, rather than getting to a point of, oh my gosh, we need a new roof and it's $500,000 and we don't have anything. We don't have any funds, so we're going to need to do something. Just to have literally a written document. I know Mark's got a lot of it in his head. Um, but to have a written document for all of those things.
Madam Chair, so Kelly would initiating that as part of the 2025 budget process so that this starting in August, September, is that reasonable or is that too optimistic or?
I would love to get it done by then. However, I'm not going to have time and now I just got another election this morning. So it's a, it's a time factor. And so like when we established the goal dates, I think I had put January 2025. Um, just because that was a because I think there's a lot of work that needs to happen too before we get to that budget discussion of what quantify, what is it?
I'm just thinking that these typically the, when you, when you do your capital budget, your total will be more than you can afford, right? And so the, maybe the, the policy question is it's easy to make the list of projects. It's hard to figure out how to make that fit in a responsible budget. So maybe that's the, the piece that takes longer is identifying the funding. So maybe there's a first cut that just tries to get a framework for projects and just acknowledge that we're not going to have it funded, right? And I'm, I mean, I'll just share a quick story. The, the first city I worked in, our engineer did a capital improvement plan for resurfacing roads. And in order to make it fit the budget we had, it was a 99-year replacement plan. Right? So, but that, but that was a starting point, right? Yeah. And so that, that might be the equivalent of, so if, if you're okay with that, don't assume that whatever is presented is a request for funding as much as trying to get a framework for discussion and then there have to be priorities set. Is that fair?
Do you want me to take that one or do you want to take that one, Terry?
If you want to go first.
Okay, so in this ties into what we started at the land committee last week is just literally identifying our memorial forest lands with signage. Um, and so we are in the process of working on some ideas for signs and we'll be going back to the committee in April with more definite.
Get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Yeah, so this is something that we started last week, um, at the land committee. And so it is literally getting signage at our memorial forest so that they're easier to identify. Um, and you know, have information on how they can be used as well. Um, so some ideas of, of signs were, were presented and, um, we are going back to kind of fine tune some ideas and come back to the committee in April.
Madam Chair, are you thinking just like entrances to, um, borders or?
Um, Greg was thinking more like borders for them, um, which I think is a really good idea so that we're respecting that private property too that we brought up against. Um, but to start with, it would be more like along the road and things because we probably can't do them all at once.
Yeah. Yeah, because I didn't looking at like some DNR stuff and it says no off-highway vehicle use or open to public hunting or whatever have you. I like, I like that idea. I think that'd be good and.
Well, we had talked about generic signs to keep it, the cost down.
Yep.
Because we don't want to spend a lot of money, but then having, um, you know, you can get the papers and get laminated.
Yep.
And have that stating what you can or can't do.
Well, most of it, most of the county land is all, there ain't a whole lot of restrictions on any, I mean, it's up to us, I'm guessing, but I would assume it's open to hunting, open to.
No permanent stands anymore and no cutting timber or stuff more than a three, two and a half or three inches or something like that.
Yeah, we have an ordinance that defines what can and can't happen on those lands.
Yeah, put a little.
You are cold.
There you go, just snap it. I mean, really, you could list everything and someone's going to find some stupid little thing that is not legal on there. So, and then do it, but, uh, so I would think the more basic, the better and have some reference to check county policy for, I mean, that's up to them. And if they do something wrong, that's their problem, you know?
Well, we had talked about too, having it on the website so that they can go to the website and see it or what, what is that other one through the state? You use that one.
The Onyx.
Onyx or whatever.
Yeah, having the correct information on Onyx, you know, just kind of looking at all those avenues is some of the stuff that we talked about too, to make sure that and Onyx had bad information, so they were going to get that corrected.
Madam Chair. I guess I got a question for Commissioner Holland. Commissioner Holland, can you even hear any of this discussion?
Yeah, I can hear every word.
Okay, all right. I don't hear anything on this end. Very, very, I texted Ryan to just get the microphones a little closer.
No.
And then can we just get a little, a little history of the, exactly so the people watching and when they view this later, what exactly can you define is memorial forest? And, and so people understand it's, it's tax forfeited land that was moved into Memorial Forest, correct?
Correct, by resolution of the county board.
Okay, and then Terry had mentioned, uh, our chair, Commissioner Lovegrin had mentioned that there's been public interest. I guess I requested, uh, what is the public interest? Is it, is it groups? Is it people that can't find enough room in the Maggi or General Andrews or Banning State Forest or any of the other tens of thousands of acres of land that's available or are they too crowded out there? Is it too cramped? Why the need?
Why the, why the need for what, JJ?
Oh, what you.
And to post it and to promote it and what's changed? You said there was public interest in this. I guess I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands first of all, it's forfeited land.
Can I take a stab at that?
Yeah, please do.
Go ahead, Steve.
Well, the, 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 um, most of the memorial forest land had, was, was tax forfeited. More than some of it 100 years ago, some of it 70 years ago. It's, it's long been, it's not something that happened in the last five or 10 years. And so it's become known to be public hunting land. Um, it's been logged, it's been re-logged. And so, uh, people like the Deer Hunters Association, the Rough Grouse Association, Turkey Federation, those kinds of groups are interested in public access to public land. And that's where I hear it from are those, the people that are in those organizations. And I personally happen to know a lot of people that enjoy hunting on public land. I know a group, a family group that has hunted on the, on the county land that's up by Markville. Uh, what's that place called Matt? That's, it's the Flowage there. Anyway.
Hay Creek.
Hay Creek, Hay Creek Flowage, yep. And so, um, you know, they've hunted there long enough to see it logged and re-logged and uh, they pull their camper up there for deer season and, um, those are the kinds of things that we want to encourage people to do. It's not a new thing. It's just making sure people know that it's okay to do that because it is public land. And, uh, I think it's a great asset for our county to have, have the county land available.
Madam Chair. Yeah, so another reason JJ is because since, since I've been a commissioner and I think it started before, it used, our public county land used to be like 69,000 acres or something like, it was a bigger number and we've sold off so much now we're down to like 39. So we've reduced where, where people used to be able to hunt, which is, and I, I live in a big chunk of that out there and I hunt and I grew up in that and like Steve said, there's people that move in and camp all deer season. And, and that's just what happens and they do all their shopping and stuff in the area and all because it's easy. You know, we have stores and stuff like that. So that's just part of it. Then there's the, the blueberry pickers and the grouse hunters and the hikers and all that. The snow build, the people have trails go through there. Um, pick, they hit some of the county land too and the state land. Anyway, that's part of it is because we reduce so much acreage from what we used to have. So it's nice to market because the, what, what people used to hunt is now private. And we, I can remember a couple hu, um, times we tried to sell Memorial Forest. And right here in this boardroom, we had a large group of people that's, and we did not end up selling that chunk.
Yeah.
Crooked Lake because there was so much public hunting on it.
You know, JJ, we also had a township, Wilma Township that came to our board and asked us not to sell any forfeited land, especially in their township because they wanted to make sure that we had land and you weren't at that meeting. Um, so, um, I wish you would have been because it, it would have been a good conversation for you to have with them at that time. So we do have a lot of public interest out there to utilize this land and we've had the land and so it's best that we get it out there so that people know what we have and where we have it and what they can do on it so that it does get used.
Yeah, would this be more of a, uh, you know, I like the idea of townships having say because, uh, the townships, they benefit most from their tax dollars off of land, correct? School districts, what, you know, what's their take on it? I mean, anytime you permanently take something off the tax rule, just increases the property tax on the remaining people that have to pay it. So what, what, what are all the rest of the townships thinking? School boards depend on a lot of the, uh, property tax, correct? What, what are their thoughts?
They, they also, they also get a cut of, uh, the, any of the timber sales, I believe.
Yes, and they get pilted.
And they get pill payments.
And this one, for example, Madam Chair, you have for, who do you have for team leaders on here? You have Greg and Matt and who is it again on here?
Kelly, I think, I think, I think it's the whole land committee that's on this one.
Oh, okay. See commissioners are involved in some of these project leads?
Yes, Matt and I are on that one.
Oh, was there any room at all for a commissioner from the fourth district myself to be involved with any of these? Any of them?
You weren't in attendance.
Which I tried to attend and I was set up for a Zoom meeting and then it was determined that because of the public, uh, off-site meeting, open meeting law.
Well, and when we said that you were going to be, so I think that that's part of the, part of the issue is that you did not say that you couldn't attend that meeting and it was set up when you were here in attendance. So, um, yeah.
I'll track it. I'm sure I can. I'll track it. I'm sure I can still attend.
No, cuz then we'll have a quorum.
Well, we just have to post for a quorum, correct?
That's not the way we do committee meetings.
If you. I would defer and we can request an opinion from the county attorney, but if you're gonna have a quorum of commissioners at a meeting. Of a county topic of interest where you're making recommendations to the county board. You have a de facto county board meeting because you have a quorum of commissioners.
Yeah.
Which is different than a quorum notice for attending a different meeting. For example, if there's a high interest in a zoning board issue and and three commissioners want to attend that. We would post it as a quorum notice with the understanding that commissioners are not participating in the conversation as a board. And they're not making a decision that's gonna be their recommendation, their decision or a recommendation of the county board, but we can get clarity.
So that, so it looks like this is the only one that has two commissioners on it? I don't see any others that have two commissioners. Or am I missing something here?
The one we just talked about, the the uh investment committee has two commissioners on that.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess to follow up the meeting law and I guess to cover my rear end, I guess I would like to say that it's been missed since we started this year. Uh the actual address of my location is nine oh four Cruroja Street, Barrio Guerrero, Puerto Rico, which is open. For access to me to view me and open to the public. Uh that's that's been missed also, Madam Chair, since beginning of the year.
What are you saying has been missed? I'm looking at your thing right now.
Well, we, to follow the uh statute, we we gotta give the address and location of where anybody is remote, so I just wanted to.
Was your address?
Correct.
Okay, so what what needs to be corrected on your address?
Nothing. It just wasn't stated at the any of these meetings so far in twenty twenty four.
It's on, it's on notice of participation via interactive technology at the beginning of every agenda.
Okay, just historically, uh Commissioner, the Chair Holland has always stated at the beginning of the the meetings. I just didn't know if something had changed where you don't have to state the address anymore, just looking at the statute.
I I don't have the statute in front of me, but I think the statute requires that the note, the location be noticed. In accordance with the meeting notice requirements and that the reason for the remote attendance be included in the minutes. And so if we are not following what you think is the statute, we can certainly, you know, review the procedure and make sure we do, but um.
Yeah, I just wanted to give my address. My location is off, just to clarify. You can look into it later.
I don't think anybody made up that address.
You don't, you don't, you're not getting my point. We've always, you uh have always said the address of where we were at. We talked about the open meeting law. Um and I couldn't attend this one. When I was on for uh Zoom, I just wanted to clarify my exact location of where I'm at right now to follow the statute. That's all I'm saying.
And and the agenda has the correct address, is that correct?
Yes, yep. Address has always been the same, it just hasn't been stated at the beginning of the meetings.
I'll take into the statute, J J.
Yeah.
Back to business.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions on identifying sign placement areas? Put in number four.
That really kind of wraps in to number three as well, and so it is, I mean, it's not only that signage, but. Understanding what we have for uh potential um public use um and so whether that is. Being clear, like a certain property has this type of use and promote that um. And also look at parking areas to make sure a lot of ours do have parking areas, but some of them are in very poor condition. Or are not large enough and then people end up parking out on the road. Uh so it's really just coming up with a plan of what those memorial forests are going to be or what they currently actually are.
Madam Chair, uh is there any of our property that has different uses or all? We have a land use policy or whatever, but it's the same on everything, right? Or not?
Um there is the one. That has one that's slightly different in our lone township. Um I can look it up really quick with them.
Isn't it different too if it's forfeited land versus if it's memorial forest land?
Well, our ordinance only covers the memorial forest land because we didn't want it to cover the forfeited land because that. I mean, that we were turning over within a year and so it seems silly to. Put regulations on it when the previous owner could still be on it because we're working through an eviction process um.
Kelly, something like that, just so you guys know what's going on.
Yeah, and and it's not that big a deal. I was just thinking. And you can even get back to me, but I was just curious cuz I think it's all the same, whatever, you know? Like I, like I s- I refer back to the D N R, like some of it, like I know the step border in my parents' land um says no A T V use. Permitted, but you can hunt it. Some of them you can have A T Vs on it, some of them, and I think it's a difference between wildlife management versus.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, Josh.
Wildlife management area, you know, some refuges, they don't let things happen like that.
Yeah.
But that was like push graphic very big. And I think, I think all the refuges are, that used to be open for small game only are open for deer hunting too now, even the state ones, but. If they're not, they're marked out in the in the synopsis.
And to me, it would be if I know I'm going on public property, it's up to me to figure out if I can drive an A T V or hunt. Or whatever.
Right.
Cuz when the conservation officer comes up to you and taps you on the back and says, hey, can't be hunting here and here's the ticket, that's my fault.
Ignorance is not a defense, not at all.
We're gonna do what we can to help people from.
Right, yeah, right.
Well, and I like to refer back to the line use policy. I mean, you know, uh I. I've seen my deer stand looked in the state land and seen a permanent deer stand and then the guy's mad when someone comes in, you know, cuts it down, so but. Thank you.
We'll get in number five.
Do we talk about the trail?
So I think Terry's looking at this one. Which the numbers are slightly different.
What should I be looking at? On here, okay, sorry. Yeah, do you have extras or is that yours?
Okay, now he's given me one. You have one? Okay, so we've done twenty twenty four dash three.
Okay. So segment, yeah, so then segment of Munger Trail, which is Mark and Steve. Steve, do you have anything on that one?
No, it's kind um. We've, we've attempted to make some uh contacts, but um not not really had success yet.
And I think Aaron in the highway department has been working on it as well because they are preparing to do that segment from. The high school down to Rock Creek and so.
Right.
Some of that D N R money.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, so we need some of that D N R money, so it's Aaron's been working on that engagement as well um to make sure we get that funding that has been pledged to it.
Yeah, and we know that is gonna happen because we got federal money coming, we got D N R money coming. It's of um. Mark, Marcus showing up to the right meetings and I think we got a million and a half coming from federal dollars on that. Uh but we're also trying then to to get somebody excited in the D N R about. Um two things, one is when I was at the Northeast Transportation Meeting the other day. Um they're, they're talking about reclaiming some of the trails on the North Shore. Well, if you've been on that trail from Hinckley North. It's, it's rough, it's, it's really bad and uh. To and 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 so some of those people, we're gonna encourage the D N R to go back and start. They gotta have a plan to re- be resurfacing those things. And then of course to connect from Hinckley down to uh the connection in Sisago County.
And Madam Chair, just two small pieces. So up in Hinckley, we have been working with the Mille Lacs Man of Ojibwe and Corporate Ventures. As they look to redevelop that area south of Toby's that we're hoping that they can make provisions to get a trail through there. So that it can get over the interstate on onto the the side where the Munger Trail currently terminates. Uh and then in Pine City, there has been a group that is working with uh the city of the school district and. The E C R D C to apply for some, I think it's Safe Routes to Schools money to get the segment from the. The high school north through the the manufactured home park completed. So there are some little efforts uh that are going on as well.
Madam Chair, so is the band agreeable to giving that like a easement or right away through there on the trail?
Yeah, they 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 are aware and they think it makes sense and we just have to stay in contact when it gets to the design. Phase of their proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna go on that one. Um they were talking about what they could put up for like signage and stuff to help promote who they are. So they were, they were actually excited about the trail and trying to figure out how they could configure. Things on that trail to make it so that you're like a touristy, you could go through there and see who Mille Lacs Band is and what they've done and you know, that type of stuff. So um there was actually excitement that went with that when we had that conversation.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Are we on branding?
Um well, since the branding implementation plan was presented to the board. We've been working internally to get all of the departments set up um. And Jen kind of gave me an extensive list of all the work that she's been doing in the background. Uh like a style guide was created and um I have used that to just help me kind of walk through adjusting some agendas and memos. And so that'll be going out to staff to use as they need to adjust things um. Just kind of creating all the templates and the mockups and I think once as a a full organization, we are effectively using the new logo. Then we can move on to the branding strategy and rolling that out to the community. Um which also involves, I mean, it's further down the list about the digital part of it. Um that also, you know, involves getting it out on the website and redoing the website and things like that, so. It's, it's moving along. It's kind of a tedious little process of, oh, you pull up, like I found like a board agenda request. I was like, oh. Yeah, I should, I should adjust this before I send it out. Um so having that that time to make those adjustments so that we can really start implementing it, so.
Madam Chair, what is uh the feedback so far? Does everybody seem to like it or?
Um I don't know if I'm qualified to answer that cuz Jen's the one that's really interacting with everybody, but she has not said anything bad.
Everybody likes it better than the old logo, so.
I was just curious cuz I've, I've heard a few things and people are like, yeah, that's cool. They like it.
We included it at the school, the meeting with the schools and there was positive feedback from the districts.
I'm excited to see more of it roll out and see what's gonna do.
The local construction trade says it looks just like a three M earplug. Have you got that comment yet?
No.
You see those? They go in there.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it. I don't see that.
If you take the the tree and put it sideways and stick it in your ear, it's in your.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, same, identical, almost the scale as a three M brand earplug. Matt probably knows some target range shooting.
The local business support resources on websites.
Yeah, so that's, that's in my bucket of stuff to do um. There, so kind of my thoughts on it is the the resources available to businesses change fairly rapidly depending on what state and federal resources are out there. And it really is heavily dependent on the type of business, what their needs are and what their current position is. So you almost need to triage businesses before you can direct them to where they need to go if if you have a situation, but. Um in my brain, I would like to get something out there that is more of like a step by step process, like did you get your zoning approval and here's who you contact to do that when you're looking at starting up a business. Um and having some of those checklists, like if you're thinking of starting a business, here's some things to consider and some tools and resources to get you along your way. Um but if you can't do it all on your own, here's some resources of people that you can contact that can. Review your business plan, review your financial projections and just kind of maybe just spitball ideas back and forth about what you're looking at. Um and then giving just some tips and tricks that once you are established, you know, have you thought about being a chamber member? Have you thought about um joining these professional groups? Um and then just sharing some ongoing resources that are free and already exist through SCORE and the S P D C. And even some of our regional partners like the Entrepreneur Fund. Um so that is what I'm envisioning being on our website, although it is kind of like a regurgitation of a lot of other. Things that are out there. It's not gonna be super unique or fresh. It's just kind of what's up here. When I meet with somebody, we'll be on a, on a webpage, so.
I'm thinking of um a lot of the phone calls that I would get was I'm gonna open a food truck. Where do, where do I come to get my license from Pine County? And it's like, well, you don't get one from, so having stuff like those resources on there too would be awesome.
Yeah.
And then um on that one, we were at Snake River Watershed yesterday and they are looking for a coordinator. I wanna say this what the position is. And um they were asking if we could put that on our websites, on each county website, because they're not getting the applicants that they thought that they would get. Um is that something that would be involved with this or something that we can do?
Yeah, probably isn't uh Madam Chair involved in this effort. Um we can just work with H R and see. I know we have cross posted. Uh some University of Minnesota Extension positions.
Okay.
And so we can probably.
Okay.
Do that and.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Moving on to mechanism for matching business needs and resources.
All right, and that kind of ties into the first one um. In a perfect world, you'd be able to kind of fill out a form that tells us about what your needs are and we could match you up through a database to those resources. Right now, that database is like my brain, my colleagues' brains, people that I work with, like, oh, what's your situation? And this one, I think, is gonna take a little bit more time to figure out. Um just as an example, I had met with a business owner last week. Who I was referred to by a local resident, like, oh, you're in a unique situation. You should talk to Leslie. So I text the business owner. He sends me a very long, complicated text message and I was like, we are gonna have to meet in person, so I set up a meeting one on one. To have a brief discussion and take down some, some notes and some things, you know, just to kind of figure out how to resolve his situation. And I don't know if there's any database out there or trick to do besides the one on one, so I think part of this is um. Just establishing a a network within our community of, you know, when businesses are having a a an issue, a situation. Who can they call to to discuss it with and then figure out what resources are more appropriate? Um well, this is gonna take a little bit more time to map out. Um because, you know, kind of like you referenced, like Mark has things up in his brain, I think up in my brain, and when you start putting it down, it's like, well. If this happens, then this could happen, but if this is happening too, then this wouldn't be where we would go and so it's becomes a very complicated little flow chart. Um you know, and in that, that interaction with that business owner, even like a couple days later, I was like, aha, I thought of something else. You should try this and. Call this person or con- consider this solution for your issue rather than just setting down one pathway, so. It's a work in progress. That one's gonna take a bit of time now.
Thanks for the effort that you put into serving our, our businesses and our peoples.
I enjoy projects and helping people, so those are the, those are the problems that I enjoy meeting with people on and and helping them figure out a solution. Um so.
Expand Leadership Academy, Jackie.
If we wanna go and do you want me to do that one or?
Oh, I'm sorry, Committee to Expand Staff Recognition.
I'm flexible.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
They gave me the right sheet of paper and I'm still up.
That's okay. I'll go from the top then. Um Committee to Expand Staff Recognition. So a common theme of the twenty twenty three employee survey was more staff recognition. So our goal around this um item is to um show our appreciation. Show more appreciation for the hard work that our employees do. We want to recognize, motivate, boost. show more appreciation for the hard work that our employees do. We want to recognize, motivate, boost morale and retain our talent. So um we will engage a committee to um expand, to help expand the recognition program. The committee will define objectives, uh determine recognition criteria, will uh choose recognition methods and de- design a program that recognizes and is accessible to all employees um across the county, no matter what their position is. And we will look to um the Personnel Committee for involvement and guidance. We would be able to present or we would present our ideas to the commu- committee and expand the policy. Any questions? Comments? Thank you. Okay, um expand the Leadership Academy. So we have had approximately ten employees complete the twelve week NACO Leadership Program. And the feedback um has been very positive. I know we have um at least three people in this room who have gone through the academy, successfully gone through the academy. So um the thought behind this item is how can we continue this momentum? How can we engage, continue to engage and support the employees that have already been through the academy? And then how do we bring more people in? How do we encourage and identify more people to to attend the academy? Um just some initial thoughts are developing a group for the people that have um completed the training. And maybe this group would have speakers come in and talk about different um topics. Or maybe we'd create a a formal graduation program when you've graduated the from the committee, maybe there would be a board recognition. But um we'll just look for ways to um expand the academy and, as I said before, support the people that have been through it and encourage more leaders to to experience the program.
There is a second academy out there that I liked way better than the first one.
What was the name of that one again, Terry?
Um I'll look and I'll.
Okay, that's fine. We can we'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's been a bit, but um it and it's through NACO. It's it's just and they're trying to get it set up so that you don't have to do the first leadership to do the second leadership training though. Um because they're different for different people.
And what was the focus of the one that you liked better?
Um this one is being a leader. So it's not necessarily being a um like a supervisor leader. It's just being a leader altogether.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Um implementing digital branding.
All right, thank you. We have discussed um as Leslie said, the the branding already, but this is just the digital side. So Jen and I have kind of taken this one up and basically we're just gonna update the new county branded logos and color schemes on all our public facing social media and websites. And including all of our updated public facing forums or any type of presentation materials um from the old logo. So that's kind of the goal and it's gonna take um IT and HR because Jen is kind of doing all the department stuff. And then IT is just kind of working through everything. Like I updated all the YouTube stuff during our last board meeting. Because I think when you run across the old logo, you just kind of start, you know, doing that kind of stuff. So and then all of our website users with all of their forms and everything else. And then we have Facebook, YouTube and Instagram as our social medias. So hopefully, once we get through some of this, we should be able to have our logo mainly done here by the end of the year. So.
Virtual store for Pine County.
Virtual store. So um Jen will uh be the project lead on this um as it's right in her wheelhouse. Um so the thought behind this is to develop a virtual store for for sure for employees and for others possibly. Where we would have um Pine County branded um merchandise such as wearables, um tote bags, coffee mugs, whatever we determine. Um we would showcase, of course, our new logo. And we've even tossed around the idea, would we have merchandise available in the public? Uh would we have it in perhaps at Cabina Cafe? Would we have it in uh Toby's in Hinckley, um something uh wearables or the merchandise branded with our logo? Maybe someone's been in uh in the county over the weekend and stops in somewhere and sees a a cool item that maybe they'd like to have and and for sure our employees. Um Josh has had a conversation with a local business that has um experience. At least Pro Shop has has experience in uh creating virtual stores. So that was interesting to hear.
Yeah, and they they do it with a lot of schools and stuff like that where, you know, they don't they don't like to do just one off things, but maybe if you had a couple of times a year, every quarter, you get your order in by this time, then they you would get it by this time type of deal. So.
And we'd be looking at something on demand too. We wouldn't, isn't something we'd carry huge inventories of of merchandise. So.
So AMC has it where you can place your order a couple of times a year and then you get your products from them. So it's it's um it's maybe more than a couple of times a year, but you go through AMC and then they place the order through their like through these Pro Shop. And then you would get the merchandise.
My HR group has that through AMC and that's where I have gotten my last two computer bags. So but it is kind of where you place your order and it was easy to do and easy to pay.
Yeah, yeah. Develop unified communication.
So this this one is um not well defined. And currently, we have each department that has communication needs does their own communication. Uh and those needs vary widely. We have um ordinary um you know, notice, required notice publications. We have education and informational uh communication. We have crisis communication. And so my goal would be to identify each department's primary communicator and then start to get from them what their processes are, what their templates are, what works well for them. Uh and then try to share that amongst all the communicators. And I'm timelining that 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 would start the fourth quarter of this year and then finish up uh the second quarter of 2025.
Inventory and timelines for online payments.
Yeah, so that's me. Um so we do currently accept some payments online for highway permits and for um for probation fees, however, and property tax. Um however, there are potentially other departments that could use an online payment platform. So just understanding those fees that people are collecting and how they'd actually like to collect them. And if there's a way that we can serve the public better with providing online options. Um and then just kind of moving towards more electronic type payment options as well. Um so some of our departments do accept credit cards um where others do not. And so potentially just working towards um implementing that further.
Have you had departments reach out to you and say, hey, I do this?
So that's the interesting part. I have departments that didn't even know it was an option.
Good.
And so in talking, so so I think that's where the conversation starts is what fees are you collecting and would you find benefit in doing it in a different way? And would it serve the public better?
Depends. So do you get people to pay their taxes with credit card?
Right, we get people that pay their property taxes with credit card a lot over the phone because we have a payment processing center and online.
Okay. And they do pay a fee?
Yep, they have to pay the fee. The statute for property taxes literally says we cannot absorb the fee for those.
Well, and don't we get a fee for like if probation comes in or the recorder's office? Don't they have to pay the, is it three percent or whatever?
They do not.
Oh, they don't?
Right. Um a couple of years ago in the budget process, that was a decision that was made that those credit card machines at the counter, that's really just a cost of doing business.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that was a lot of me. I push that because I don't like the fees. So I'm just always like, I think they're petty.
I went someplace, I went to a Gophers hockey game the other day and they don't take cash. And I looked at them like they were crazy and then gave me your credit card and then they charge you the fees with your credit card, but they won't take your cash. It's like, no. Um complete interactive online forums.
All right. So during strategic planning, it was brought up by Kelly to have a better, more like PDF fillable forms on the website. Um so with our website redesign, we can, we have added that into the build of the website. So once the website is live, we're able to build the forms as we see fit for each department. Um since it was driven by Kelly and hopefully the website will be live sometime in September is the kind of new estimate. Um obviously with the election, we're gonna push that past the beginning of the year for Kelly. But we'll be able to build other department forms, kind of test it out, figure out how it works. Um and then we'll be able to get Kelly on board after the beginning of the year. So but it should help be helpful because then the form we get from the citizens will be like an actual filled out form. Um so it should be really helpful.
So they can do an online application for.
Yep, yep. But then we would get it and it would look exactly like they had just handed it to us instead of a bunch of random fields. So.
That's gonna be nice. GIS.
Kelly, you had enough, so you didn't get this one. Um so we have talked about GIS for a long time, I think, and the conclusion has always been we need more staff time or we need a staff person if we're gonna change the dynamic. Uh right now, the main uh users of GIS related uh stuff is the sheriff's office, highway zoning auditor treasurer. And my goal would be to get them to to coordinate some conversation among them. I know we contract with some vendors. We do some in-house stuff. Uh and if we want to, I guess my goal would be to have solicit feedback from those using user departments, identify their highest priority unmet needs and then see how we best work towards a solution.
Integration plan. Oh, I'm sorry, AI.
It's back to me. Um so we are working through the tech committee through an AI use policy. And so I think during strategic planning, we brought up having an integration plan. So I think we'll work through the committee as kind of a steering committee for that. Um but basically, how do our vendors anticipate using AI or if we're gonna get billed extra for it? Kind of like, what would we use it for? So how would we integrate this into the county? Obviously, there's returns on investment. We don't want to buy things that we don't need. And I think initially um with AI, you run into that, is it a solution looking for a problem? Um and it's the exact opposite of that, actually, because it's solutions to problems we didn't really know we ever had. So I think as it's kind of changing and kind of going through its kind of life cycle, we still don't know kind of everything that it can do so far. So through the tech committee, we'll kind of build this plan out. I know NACO is working through a bunch of AI policies, so we won't be starting from ground zero. But that's kind of the overall goal is to kind of have that done this year or by the end of the year. So.
With Central Minnesota Jobs and Training, they were talking about AI and they're gonna be having a class coming up on AI. I can get you the date if you want to join in on that. But um and it's done through the schools, but I think it's gonna do more. But they were talking about grants and writing grants. And you can say um cover letter for blah, 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 and it'll it'll write it. And if you don't like it, you push the button again and it doesn't. So you know, because then the question was um how many people are gonna get the same cover letter? And they came back and said, really, nobody. So.
Unless you use the same prompts. Exactly.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah. Yes, I mean, it was really interesting to hear what, you know, and the one guy sat there and entered stuff while we were in the meeting and he would say, you know. So um but I'll get you information on that, the dates on that.
What's the cost for a guy? Is there a cost of feet?
It depends. Um like there's AI integrations we already have inside of our antivirus or our um our EDR solution. We're using it in the jail for the cameras so we can follow inmates around. Um so we already are using the machine learning side. Um Microsoft Windows is adding AI into it just kind of as their operating system. But I think it's gonna be more of like our GIS vendor is gonna come out and say, we have this new AI module. It's $25,000 a year and it can do X, Y, and Z. And then we're gonna have to figure out the return on investment for something like that. But we do that for every piece of software we do already. So I think it just depends whether it's gonna be part of the programs we already have or if we're gonna have to pay for it depending on. So.
Things he licenses probably gonna go up.
Yep. Well, it goes up anyway. So.
Yeah, it's just like another marketing, another tool.
Correct. Yep.
The first one. Um evaluate the jail project. Facilities.
Yeah, that's that's me.
Oh, yeah. Closer.
Well, I don't know what's happening. We've talked about it. Um we kind of, this is the way I look at it. We we something had to be done in the jail as the way it was presented us through all of COVID and and it makes sense with not just because COVID, but COVID brought out the weaknesses with separating of inmates. And we've always hit the the law around separating inmates has always been there. So there's a lot of things that happen in the jail because there's no mental health beds. So sometimes we hold them for a little while. And juvenile bed's the same thing. Sometimes we hold them for a little while and they all have to be separated. Like, for example, if you have a juvenile there, he cannot be where he can even hear or see an adult. Those kind of issues just exist. Um Rod or Jeff could probably explain them better than me. But so then you go to the part where we don't want to change the footprints. And we don't, and like I said, well, if we're gonna look at this and we have, we have applied for the bonding and we have a kind of a plan that was, it's probably two years old now, isn't it? Roughly the estimate. So I don't know what's gonna happen, but I brought up like, can we change the number of beds that we have as a whole? I don't know if that's good or bad. That's we leave that to them, but our population trends in jail, I think, are lower. So does that change what we do? I don't know the answer to that, but it could. And then the scanner thing makes sense to me, which is uh it's just a body scanner. So when they come through it, it eliminates the positions you might need to do body orps, orifice checks. You know, they can always do a strip search, but there's places you can't see and things like that. So that makes sense to me. Separation makes sense to me. And then actually having a spot in intake so they don't really enter the jail. They're in intake. That means you kind of can separate your juveniles from the actual jail. But they're still in a holding spot. The same with mentally ill. So that all makes sense to me and what it's gonna look like. I don't know. But I think the P, Rod is great. He's he's got a lot of stuff going on and Jeff and him in a loop. I don't know where we end up. We'll see what we get for money. So that's a moving target.
Well, we were told that there's really no money. So we did ask and the ask was out there and we were told that um there's not money.
They spent it all last year.
They spent it all plus some last year. So JJ, you're on the facility committee. Did you want to add anything to that?
Just that's difficult to hear when you don't speak into the microphones. But from what I gathered, that's what we reviewed at our facility committee, what we talked about, what what Matt said is is accurate from from what I picked up.
Actually, he was speaking into a microphone pretty well.
Yeah, I was right. I was right into it. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on. I texted uh Ryan there. I got it turned up. And yeah, Steve said he can hear good. So I don't know. But from what I understand, yeah, Matt, sounds good. To work through it.
Do you have anything, Jeff, that you, any thoughts on that one? Or do you want to?
Well, I think we're uh unfolding that until we get the official answer on the bonding and what that takes. And then I think it's worth reevaluating the money that we have set aside for it and what we can do with that. That's been an ongoing conversation with Rod. And we'll see where, when the decisions are made, what that means.
Do we have like a time period? We need to do something sooner than later?
Well, there's a, there's a lot happening this summer. Because uh we're gonna end up holding some inmates for Carlton County. So I don't know, we don't want to be doing construction. So I don't know, we don't wanna be doing construction when that happens, I don't think. So I'm looking at, I'm guessing, I shouldn't say, I'm, I don't, I'm not in charge of that, but I'm assuming it's gonna be after we're done help assisting Carlton County, which we agreed to do. Um, and then, but it doesn't stop us from planning and doing that kind of stuff, figuring out what might work. And I think that's where I'd leave it. Moving target.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, just, we're in a holding pattern until we get definitive decisions out of the legislature. So come May, we'll evaluate what those decisions were. Then if we were to decide that there is some construction necessary, that's probably at least a six plus month process to go through the, the design process. So any, I would be surprised if anything we did was before twenty twenty-five.
We might get money in twenty twenty-five.
Never know.
Yeah, we can be hopeful. Um, expand social services, social work services to the inmates post jail.
Yes, oh, this is Sheriff Nelson and my lead project, I would say, our co-project that we're leading, trying to lead. Um, right now, we are providing some outreach services, um, through a social worker from H H S to inmates, um, is voluntary for the inmates. I think that we can, um, depending on, I think that's being used well and that's appreciated from what I've heard. And I think when we're looking at expanding those, it might not be H H S, Social Work Services. It might be, um, coordinating with other agencies who provide, um, some mental health services and other like services. And I think we put this on the timeline for later this year. So I think that will be a continual conversation to see what that looks like.
They had a program on this at the leg. Where Paul from Saint Louis came down and, and they've got, um, so I mean, Saint Louis has some really good programs going if you want other ideas too. Um, they actually have a house in Ely that, um, they put people in that, um, just kinda need a, a place to be. You know, to heal or whatever, and they have transportation. But I mean, he was talking about a lot of the things that they're doing up there and they've got some amazing things that they're working on. So, yeah, Paul McDonald, if you have any questions, reach out to him too. He likes to talk about it. Yes.
Madam Chair, and Becky, I, I know you can give more detail than I'll give, but I, my recollection is that this program that you've been working on with the social worker in the jail is a county funded program. There's not program money attached to it. And so that has been the limiting factor with expanding programs is most of what, most of the stuff that Becky's staff does is covered by non-levy money. And so this is building a program that is primarily levy funded. And so that just is a good tidbit to have in mind when we think of expanding the program.
I think too, just to, just to build on that, it is a couple hours a week that Adrian is in the jail. Um, but she does so many other things too, so it's really a capacity issue for her and for, um, other staff. And then you have the funding issue. Um, we are, we have just, um, began, begun billing, um, M A for some services that we do post jail. Or if there's been some intersection with law enforcement with adults. Um, but I think if we're looking at having more of these services in jail, it will be bringing other providers in and, and um, I think the tricky part will be finding the funding to do that. And if you find the funding, then hiring the staff to do that.
Another plan is excellent. You know, there's, you guys have just really done a lot of work on what you're gonna do and how you can serve the people better. And hopefully it will keep our jails a little emptier, you know, if they can get the help that they need. Restorative Justice Crossover Youth Development Program. Reese build on you just for.
Yeah, we've not, well, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Reese and I have had, uh, multiple conversations about this. Um, I did check with a colleague of mine who's on that restorative justice committee with the state. Um, it's really, they just have to get the director of restorative practices in place before they can start distributing R F Ps. And so that literally just went out the other day and it's gonna be posted for three weeks and then hopefully we'll start seeing some money opportunities after that. So that's a full year later that it's still sitting there. It's a little frustrating, but um, the other one is the crossover youth development model. Becky and I met several months back on that at preliminary meeting. Uh, that one's also kind of in a holding pattern. Um, I did check with O J P about that, uh, recently. Um, she didn't get back to me on that, but I have since heard the reason for their holding pattern is O J P literally do not have the staffing to administer all the grants that they're supposed to set up. So that's a problem. Uh, but I am in contact with, uh, Kelly from O J P. She also is the, um, one who oversees our evening reporting center grant, so. Um, so stay tuned. I, I think we put initially, um, at our strategic planning meeting, maybe April or May as kind of a, you know, start date on those, but we'll see whenever that, those R F Ps come out and then uh, Reese and I, uh, will go from there. Thank you.
It's what you do for that. Um, flexible funding.
I'll, I'll start with that and then Jeff can fill in if needed. So at the last board meeting, um, we approved the accounting structure for this. Um, and so that was step one. Step two through however many now will be to develop a policy as to how those funds can or should be used in kind of the process um, that the deputies can follow to use that funding. Um, and then also just setting up like charge accounts so that the deputies don't have to pay out of their pocket and then get reimbursed from the county. Um, so if we can get some charge account set up at places so that those can just be used. Um, and then just funding it too. Um, I know during the strategic planning, we had talked about potential donation type funding. Um, so those are kind of the to-do still. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Not a whole lot. Uh, all the examples I've found are run under a nonprofit, so having it under a government entity, I, um, being a little held up on how we process that. Um.
You take donations for your canine.
Yeah, we do, but I think the whole feedback has been, uh, you know, the government is somehow taking public funding and distributing it. Not as accountable as A J S is on how they do their program. So they wanted this, that clear separation between this is a nonprofit that's funding it and controlling the funds with the board. And it has nothing to do with Pine County government. So that's where I'm getting a little.
That's the system we used to have with.
Yeah, the organization, information I've gotten is all that. It's not a, how do we do it within a government? And that would involve more conversation with, um, obviously with Kelly on what is okay and what isn't. And it starts getting a little more complicated when you have government rules rather than a nonprofit.
So what kind of places do they use for nonprofits? Just out of curiosity.
They created their own, uh, the, the main one is out of, uh, Wright County. Um, they basically created a five oh one three C or D or whatever letter goes after it, um, where it's all, they got grant money, they've got, you know, income from a golf tournament and those kind of things that people donate to. Um, and now they've actually have two parts of it, one that feeds into the, um, deputies being able to do those immediate need things, but then they've also done a, um, law enforcement benevolence fund or whatever you wanna call it, where they put money back into training for deputies and buying equipment and those kind of things that we'd like to get started also as a five oh one. But, um, so that's where I'm at with it. I'm, I'm struggling a little bit on how we process that. Um, I don't have a lot of examples to work with.
Madam Chair, so I remember when the canine stuff started, that was a hundred percent donation.
Right.
Um, and then we started putting some money towards it. But I think when we talked about this, we were talking very minimal money it would take to float this, like, is it just something we just need to maybe us as a county should just commit? What? Cause I thought you threw out a number of like a thousand or two thousand bucks.
Dollar amount that would be needed.
And then if someone wanted to donate, they can donate to the.
Right, right.
I don't know, I'm just thinking aloud, but.
And Wright's obviously a bigger county to draw from, but they had, I think it's two years in operations now and they've gotten like a hundred thousand dollars worth of funding.
But they have fundraisers to get it like.
Through the fundraisers, through the board of directors on that nonprofit. So again, not the same model that we're here, not the same expectations, obviously, on income. Um, so again, that, that's where I stalled at, to be honest with you, is trying to figure out how we wanna operate it. And I haven't had time to deal with it a whole lot, to be honest, as well. So.
What's the criteria that would make it happen?
Well, I think that's part of what needs to be decided on. Um, how we do that, because again, part of their model is they, every sergeant gets ten gift cards for twenty-five dollars. They control the in and out with that. They give those out to deputies as needed. Um, I don't know if that works in our model or not.
I mean, who get, who, when you would give it to somebody? That's the criteria that's gonna matter.
They stall on what the deputies' decisions are. There's really no, with, again, with the nonprofit, there is looser guidelines and the ability to not, you know, screw up somebody's accounting on what we did with both government funds. Um, so it's, it's all outside that on a nonprofit basis.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna levy money just to.
No.
I don't wanna do that.
No, that gets, that gets muddy.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's worth maybe broadening the focus a little and asking the question, is there the potential for a local nonprofit in Pine County to form or to step up? And become a part of the conversation before we get too far down the road of, here's our policy.
Right.
I, uh, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Steve.
I, I, I would have, I would agree with David and I think, you know, um, a place for you, the Bulma Shelter, Our Redeemer Lutheran Church has similar type programs. Maybe, maybe we could draw them into the conversation. I'd be willing to, to facilitate that. And, uh, uh, maybe they've already got a mechanism and the money could get to them and get gift cards back out to the deputies.
Yeah, and that'd be great. And those, I had that thought too. I just, again, haven't had time to chase down who those might be. So if, uh, everyone on this meeting has an idea, if they wanna send me contacts or Steve, if you wanna do it, I would certainly appreciate that as well, so.
I can help with that, Jeff. I know some people that probably can help facilitate.
Yeah, and if there's a way just to slide in under theirs and, and they set aside the funding within their organization, uh, I think that'd be wonderful. Thought.
So I have an idea, Jeff. Do you still have a chaplain group meeting?
We do.
Come out to, and how many are involved in that? Cause that would get the message back to all the churches. They used to all used to meet kinda intermittently.
Yeah, the chaplaincy is kinda, the, 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 the main chaplain's moved on now, so I don't know that we have a good organization there.
It'd be kinda nice though, cause I think a lot of people go to the churches looking for stuff, you know, and so it's, it's while we help support this program and, you know, that might be helpful for them too.
Yeah, and I think it's more even shorter term than that of deputies at a call and there's the situation.
Yes.
Right.
A hundred bucks could solve.
Right, a hotel room for the maid or.
Twenty, twenty bucks a lot of times. What they need.
Any other conversation on this one? Matt, we'll go to the old housing forum.
All right, so that's me. Um, so my thoughts on this, so we've, I've helped coordinate a housing forum in the region before. And so I kinda drew from that experience what one would look like here. And I think when we met, um, you know, we, we wanted to hear from people in our community about what's preventing them from developing housing, whether it's single family, multifamily, what's, what are the roadblocks and how can we help? So what I would envision is that, um, we kinda pulled together maybe an expert panel of people who have been successful in Pine County at developing housing and talk about what, what hoops they had to jump through, what connections they had to make in order to get the housing moving forward. Um, I am considering revisiting our planning and zoning presentation that we did in conjunction with development to talk about how they relate to each other. And that, um, depending on where you wanna do development, the zoning requirements are most often the first impediment that developers reach. And that could be just getting an answer on whether or not they can do the project or not. Um, this also ties in with G I S because, um, quite simply, you know, zoning maps could be put in G I S and people could get that question answered for them pretty quickly. If we could just as a county, get all of our zoning on, on one map. Um, so that's something else to just kind of flavor in there. And then, um, you know, in that same event, just showcasing what other funding sources there can be for housing and how that involves the local unit of government and the developer working together. Um, and then maybe just having some breakout sessions where if you have a particular topic of interest under housing, if it's single family or multifamily or senior housing. Um, or, you know, collaborating with local units of government that you could break out and, and kind of meet those people where they're at. Um, this will take quite a bit of coordinating and effort. And I know it was first talked about, oh, do, do it this spring. Well, already coordinating a familiarization event with real estate professionals regionally here in Pine County in April. So doing this at the same time seems a bit insurmountable, but, um, I think you know, just kind of putting it out there of what I have in mind and then kind of working through to see who I can get. Uh, then we'll see where it goes in the next few months and maybe this fall or into next year, we could have one. Um, just kind of getting those experts together and stuff would be just require some coordination, coordination and planning and making sure that their schedules allow, so. Yeah, that's my thought process.
Then we need to establish the twenty twenty-four cow meetings.
And Madam Chair, number four on the agenda outlines, um, two that could be possible. Uh, upcoming special meetings, committee of the whole, uh, the annual road tour and in, uh, checking with Mark. Uh, he's suggesting either April twenty-third or thirtieth. And then, uh, Hugh Life is, uh, they have a follow-up meeting with us as part of their contract. Uh, and so that could be scheduled in May or June if that were, uh, agreeable. And then obviously there's a myriad of other topics that you might be interested in putting on the list.
So we had talked about having more cow meetings when we were at strategic planning. How often do people want to do them? I guess that's probably the first question. Anybody have any ideas?
It seems like we can come up with, uh, plenty of topics every other month.
That's what I was thinking too, if we did every other month.
The twenty-third or the thirtieth of April?
Right.
Is, is that what we're looking for a road tour?
Yes.
Uh, that's fine with me. I don't know about everybody else.
Anybody have any issues of any of those dates? I'm open on both of them.
It's a Tuesday, older Tuesday.
The both Tuesdays, yeah.
Twenty-third?
Let's go for the twenty-third.
Would you wanna do a motion to set that as a special meeting?
Yep, or do we wanna, do we wanna set the one up for Hugh too?
Oh, you, certainly you can.
Do them both at the same time. So Hugh check in, I don't.
But I'd, I'd have to check their schedule.
Oh, okay.
If there are dates that in May or June that you know would work for the board. Um, I would wanna, I'd wanna verify those with, with them.
Right. I think, um, how are Tuesdays for people for David to have those dates that they could give to Hugh?
Generally, pretty good.
That's usually the day I kinda.
So, okay, so if you figured, um, May or June and just check with them to see what they have open. So then, do we have a motion to have a meeting on April twenty-third?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by J J and a second by Steve. Are there any questions or anything?
And that would be a nine o'clock convening right here and then going on the road tour.
Okay. So nine o'clock, April twenty-third, meeting in Pine City. And do we need to do a roll call vote? Yes?
Yes, we need to do a roll call vote. Yes, we need to do a roll call vote.
District four, Commissioner Waldham?
Yes.
District five, Matt Ludwig?
Hi.
District one. Steve.
Yep.
District Josh Moore?
Yes.
And district three, Terry?
Yes. Is there any other business that anybody wants to talk about while we're here? No, all right, so.
Thank you, guys.
We will keep you posted on what's gonna happen with Hugh when we know more. Have a wonderful.
And Madam Chair, just one more comment. As far as like regular reporting of the strategic plan. Uh, unless you want something different, I would plan to to touch base quarterly. With the board, probably not reporting all items every quarter, but reporting some items that have made progress uh the previous quarter, if that sounds reasonable.
I think that, thanks, Dave. Evening adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.